Okay. Welcome to the May 21st meeting of Board of Township Trustees. We'll call this meeting or at seven o'clock on the dot. And now entertain a motion to adopt minutes of May 7th as amended or presented or corrected.
Uh, I do have a couple little things.
What I do is uh...
I move the adoption of the minutes.
The minor, very minor. A motion, I'll second that. Any further discussion regarding that adoption, hearing none, may we vote please?
Mr. Hollister?
Yes.
Mr. Mutcher?
Yes.
And now move for an adoption of the payment deals the amount of $24,157.54, broken down in general fund, $17.50.16, fire fund, $14.4416.38, cemetery, $206.86.
Oh my God.
MS building, $35.87.67, Rome Bridge, $37.48.41, and Capital Project, $4.48.
Oh, okay. I shall move.
There's a motion and I will second that. Any further discussion regarding the adoption of the payment of those accounts? Yes. Our assistant chief is Mr. IT, Mr. Tech, Mr. Everything, and he pays sales tax on some download of...
Uh-oh.
Some software.
Okay.
Yeah. What, which one was it?
The... Oh, it was, I think it was the update for, the only thing he bought recently was the update for QuickBooks.
Yeah.
He was staffed for accounting for the...
Anyway.
AHJ Training Center.
He could work on that.
So you're saying we don't have to pay them? We should be more consistent and not having to pay?
We should be.
Sales tax.
Yeah, he must have missed that. I would say better than I am, but I'm not very good, so.
I wasn't gonna mention the dollar four in Michael's craft that's obviously needed. Anyway, that's my discussion on that. May we vote please?
Mr. Mutcher?
Yes.
Mr. Hollister?
Let's see, correspondence for period, we have the Green County Annual Report, the Green County Convention Visor- Bureau Annual Report to come to come to land trust from newsletter, Old Bill News, the old township news magazine, the OTA Monthly Letter, brassless clippings, notice from USDA regarding 2017 yearly financial report.
Boy, those are gonna get old.
Notice from Ohio EPA regarding Class D bio solids going out on Dave Linkard's property.
Expecting date, it's Roy's.
Oh, it's Roy's?
343, it's about 343.
Oh, yeah. Not as far along.
Unstatus revenue status, appropriation status, any further correspondence? Well, I have one. This is an email to Representative Rick Peralos. It reads, Dear Rick, I'm writing today to support House Bill 500, Township Omnibus and Legislation Bill. I understand the state and local level committee has scheduled it for a vote Thursday the 24th. I and the other members of the Township Ward and Trustees. You got included there. Strongly urge you to vote in favor of the bill when it comes before you. Thank you and thank you for attending to support for Ohio Townships. Neat. So there, that's one addition.
What was I supposed, House Bill 500?
It's a bunch of stuff, all pertaining to townships. You know, you can start charging for parking and you can, you know, you can fire your fire chief without anything to do. In your fisk officer's, your fisk officer's days are numbered. Remember that last one they did? I think that was in the omnibus bill where it was the...
I put this up again.
Fisk officer review procedure. All right, let's move on to filling time here tonight, guys, to the fire department.
My answer's the time, I couldn't type the...
I was gonna say, where is it?
I actually forgot. It's like in another world today. So you're lucky I'm here. Since the last meeting, we've had 32 EMS calls, eight fire calls, six fire safety inspections, and I've issued two permits.
Where are you inspecting? Is it downtown or all places?
Just here, there. I think one was at the children's center. One over there. Two out of, Cresco?
Not really.
Yeah. We have to inspect marijuana, so.
Right now, it's just concrete, there's no...
No, that's what we were saying, there's nothing there. No, we have to, I mean, there's a series of inspections, but we have to do the... There's a separate water main that runs into the building for the fire suppression system. And we're required by law to go with the building department inspector. Which means I either we go, looks like a pipe, what do you think, building inspector, but...
Are they gonna have auxiliary pump for that?
I do not know. I just got the plans this afternoon, I've had a chance to look at it. I would assume so given the size of the building, but I don't know.
I didn't expect it to be that tall.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, is that the grow area in there? I mean, do they do that in...
That's the... That is, the concrete part is the processing portion of the building, which they don't have their permit for yet. The office is the processing part in my understanding. A secure room of sorts to keep the mother in mind there. And a security office. And then, if you look at it, there's all these metal posts outside the building on the west side. Now, that's where the, that'll be where.
When you, last meeting you ordered on the fire out on Yellowstone Trail, and the State Fire Marshal had a preliminary report. Did they come up with anything new in a final report?
Not yet. No, he said he would leave it open three to five weeks depending on the insurance company what he's doing. I've heard of his official office. And actually, I was in contact with the owner last week and he said he hadn't heard of it. I don't think there'll be much of a change there for preliminary, but it's possible. Oh, it's National Emergency Medical Services Week, so, you know, thank an EMT, have a heart attack, whatever you gotta do. This is the week to do it. So, we're gonna party tomorrow night for the troops.
Good.
To thank them for their stuff, their work. I'm not sure exactly what we're doing there, but it's still taking shape. Wednesday at 3:00, right here, there, we'll be receiving a donation of $10,600 from the 100 Women of Green County Making a Difference, please. Here marked for a Luca CPR device.
So is it gonna be in ceremony or photo op?
Or, all of those.
Yes. I know they've invited the press. They're handling all the...
Speech is a plenty.
Speech is a plenty?
Are you gonna?
I've been invited to wax eloquently on the benefits of automatic depression.
Not that we matter, will you?
Anyway, so.
I'll throw them in.
We definitely greatly appreciate their donation and Lisa Goldberg's work in getting this done, so. Thank you Lisa. Our new power cut that we're getting through the Work as Con grant, the price went up, of course, between the times we got the quote in October and when we finally received the grant. So I think we have to shell in $1800. So it's shipping next week to Braun Ambulance and Van Work. And then July 11th, we'll take the ambulance out. And they will install the charging system and all that kind of thing.
Exactly the same as the one you have?
Exact same model.
Good. No relearning?
Correct, that's exactly what we wanted. They have a new, the mounting system we have is just like this antler looking thing that you steer it into. Click, it's very old school. They've got a new one, that's just a rail that goes down the center. Which is now the only one you can get, but because of when we placed the order, we're able to get the... So both ambulances do exactly the same. And Braun estimates anywhere from, anywhere from a day to a week to do the install. So I'm hoping it's a little bit more than a day because it would upset me to drive to Van Work dropping ambulance off. They're back here and they call and say, hey, it's not good. It was a trip to Van Work you ain't lived until you done that.
Oh, I've been there.
Would you have had to retrofit the other one if you couldn't get the same hook up?
Yes. Well, I mean, we could have had two different ones, I mean, two different hooks, but I like not to do that when it's possible.
So they could be interchanged?
That would be the big problem, is that, yeah, right now they can't.
That's what I mean, if you couldn't have, we would have had...
Yeah, we wouldn't have been able to interchange last one, ambulance and ambulance. Our new, we've got our 40 recruits that you approved last week, or two weeks ago, are all on board and doing their orientations and everything, so they all seem happy and so far.
How's your new hourly scheduling count so far?
The, well, the current staff worked really well. We are still short part timers, so we've just suddenly had to fill in all the early slots, daytime. Evan, Brett, and Ted are going there once every six days, as we're supposed to, and they seem happy. Brett was really excited about it because it's easier for his schedule to know for the rest of his life, at least. He's always gonna work this day. There were a little, you know, a couple staff booths as we started. Started that, you know, one of the employees had already scheduled himself for something else on Monday, so. We don't have, you know, we don't have the depth of part timers who are available to cover those holes yet. We'll get there. But volunteer staff have been setting up to help cover those holes when they can't in the day. It helps that it's in the summer and some people come in their classes and so.
But your full-time people are settling into the routine of it and...
More so than I am, because I keep trying to send them home at 7:00 PM. Except maybe I try to send them home at 4:00, but luckily they're all on top of things, though. So yeah, so far, so good.
Classic.
Yeah, classic laminate wood, thanks, but. And then I'll be at the State House tomorrow morning testifying on behalf of House Bill 5, something, not yours, but another five.
Pop in Steve Peralos.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll drop in and say, hey. Give him a glad hand about going for five hundred.
He's across the street.
I'll have to, I'll have to check with my legislative agents and see what the fire chiefs have, if we've taken a position on that bill. They've been very big on that, okay? They can decide what we tell you to say, so. But for the volunteer income tax credit bill. Hopefully we're gonna play the... And that's it. Oh, I gotta ceiling repair quote for the station, for the cliff in kitchen that collapsed following the roof leaks. And I went ahead and authorized it. It's $300, so.
I was gonna suggest the mayor throwing on that one, but...
Yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest, too. I got the quote from his dad and... So do you want me to send that quote in? I think I authorized that one, so.
All right, anything else for the chief? At least not drowned.
I heard, I heard something to say that was due.
Oh, it could, we had a problem with bird up there before. Ted and Joe chased it away and sealed up what they thought was his or her accident. Well, actually, it was a couple, so.
Oh.
Yeah, there was a hole into the bay and the birds come in, chilled the bay, and then they found this hole and... And this whole beautiful area that they could hang out in and no one would even know, except they can't keep their mouth shut in here. If we keep our air out of the pool, yeah, I'll send Joe and Ted in.
Okay, now we're up to the new firehouse report. What excitement do we have for that this evening?
You know.
I know.
Yeah. Tell her.
Oh.
After time.
The project is out for bids as we speak. I ran once last Monday in the Daily Paper, ran a second time today in the Daily Paper, will run a third time next Monday, and then, I don't have the timeframe, but there's a small amount of, small window and then the bids will be due mid... Or in, no, early June? Not early June, probably mid-June. Then we've got a couple weeks that we review them, whether they are acceptable or not, or just one that we want. I think we will potentially award it second meeting in July. So, we'll see, see what comes in. And frankly, other than that, I don't think there's anything else. So, we shall move on to the secretary report review.
Okay. Our bases are done. Just waiting also. And we're going to clean up the cliff and cemetery this week. It looks bad and...
Sprain it back from this.
More. Maybe throw it back today.
I basically did a good one. It's like a, when I just made some little drawing.
We did eight, two of them on anything we wanted, we didn't get eight more. There was a three and a re four. Four. And I'll put something back, here's a re four. But I'm ready, I'm ready for it. Roger Weed was reading it today, he was ready for the meeting.
I saw that he was doing that.
Then he went out to the other city.
I saw they were out there, too.
I took the flags and the poles out Friday for the service, I'll get them Friday morning.
Have they contacted you or...
No, I get them out in the morning, so maybe I can go on, usually Tim calls me.
I don't know if this meeting is going to air before Memorial Day, I'm not sure what the schedule is, but there will be an event to rededicate the cannon on the...
On the Saturday, the 26th or Memorial Day.
I bet I know.
It's, it's that weekend, it's that weekend somehow. I told Roger, try to get, you know, get a little something to go with it.
Are you gonna fire it?
Yeah.
No.
Supposedly, the rumor has that if it was fired, and it could be fired, it did take some work, but, I mean, it's open, the barrel's, barrel's open. If it's the normal charge of when it was built, it's kind of complicated, it would take down one of the spires and the...
Really?
Kelly Hall.
You mean, if it was pointed in that direction?
It is pointed in that direction. That's, that's where it's pointed to.
It would, the cannonball would go all the way out that way?
Yes. That's not that far from the cannonball.
It's pointed this way. I thought it was pointed right at the police station, so it's pointed kind of this way?
Yeah, it's pointed that way.
Is that some kind of sign?
This pertains to what agenda item?
It's a cemetery.
Cemetery?
Okay.
We need to take out the college, we need to do it now.
This is item number seven.
No way, I can't believe that would happen. Okay, what?
Okay, I have put flowers in the cemetery in the...
Only one grave that you do every year?
Yeah. Six graves in the one, in the one lot. So I haven't changed the person's name. We discovered a paper in the files when we took over the forest from the association that a woman had endowed the association with a certain amount, I think it was a hundred dollars, and she wanted, she asked for and they agreed to it to put flowers on Memorial Day on her relative's grave, which then included her after a small time.
So this goes back how many years?
Well, it goes back a while.
A hundred years?
No, it takes that much.
Between the twenties or something.
Almost.
Almost.
So we decided that we would honor that request.
I like that.
And so, every year since we slash, I've been putting flowers on the grave. And the old flowerpots from last year's are still there. So I took them and disposed of them. Something never changes. But yes, I'm expecting the cemetery to look very nice this weekend since we got a little head start on it. We're gonna get through it. Good.
I've got a burial Thursday in Cliffton, so. Actually, a lady tomorrow wants to buy four graves.
Yeah, you told me.
Well, Bernie, I think, wants to buy eight, maybe twelve.
Oh, this is different?
This is different.
Wow.
Yeah, she wanted to buy at least eight. And there's like three lots, but I might just buy that, too. They're available for interest, so.
This is a question?
She'll be calling, there's a mail in, a, from, no matter the check, but I said call, let me know which one to check, so I can make you a note for Bernie. It's down by the Hayes, Hayes might know. But the lady tomorrow is associated with the burial for Thursday. She's gonna meet me there tomorrow afternoon, I said, I'll be there. That's about all I'll go for, something.
Did, we get a check from Green Township?
No, we have not. I'm gonna call them tomorrow. Yeah, yeah, that's, won't accept me. I just thought of that, too. Now, what the holdup is, I did, I did actually, when we got the $1,500 payment for fire services from Green Township, I contacted the, Brian Clem. I texted him right away, I said, what's up? And he said, I figured I would hear from you. And he said it hadn't been discussed, and then it was gonna be discussed at the next meeting. That has since passed.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, yeah, so I will reach out tomorrow on that.
Okay. Any other cemetery business before the board this evening? Hearing none, we'll move to the road.
Okay. I guess we need to pull one of those where you're chipping.
You can put Jacobi on that list?
Ooh.
You know, we kind of planned on doing Jacobi before the village started on the...
Right, and we held out because of, because of the building process and, you want it on here?
If you can get it.
Wasn't there something else that you wanted to put on the list at the end of the meeting? Was it so important? Did I do that correctly in the list?
No. That's why I corrected it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right.
So I talked to her, I told her we had to wedge a little bit out there, and she said, okay. And she said they throw a little more material on those areas, because they have tendency, if it didn't down for a long, it doesn't stick. But she's gonna add a more material at those areas. I said, okay. I'll call her back and see if we can throw Jacobi on there.
It's rather long.
It's 1,200 feet, it's a thousand foot, 1,200 foot.
Is it 1,200?
Mm, something like that.
Okay. She said, just didn't see.
I think that's what, I'll have to look, I'll look. Yeah, we're gonna wedge after the sixth. We're gonna get her wedging done starting at six. Probably did before that. She said they did us probably mid to late July, which would be a nice time for it to lay down. That's a cure a little bit, isn't it? So that's what we're gonna do, and then hopefully next week I'll start the new, just... Jumped up pretty fast, dude.
Yeah. God, that's amazing, isn't it?
I know, I thought you, give it a week or two.
Just sit there and watch it.
All the grass is gone, like, it's very...
Grasses, trees, bushes.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not complaining, it's just, I can't keep up with it. I don't have anything else for you.
Any info?
Nope.
Okay, let's see, fisk officer?
I don't really know much to say. I don't have any resolutions. When you asked about how much, why is there still money in the, or the balance in our...
Mm-hmm, $149,000.
Yeah. It's simply that we've, you know, any money that's in that account is money that has, I mean, and the revenue, you know, anything that's in there is what we, is money that we've already spent, and we get reimbursed for it. And so we just, it's kind of like, I think when we first, I remember when we first got the $306,000, that included what we'd spent the previous year and what we'd already spent up to, it's just money that's just, it's just there. It's just money that's, we've been reimbursed for.
Okay, well then, it needs to go back into where it originally came from, if that's reimbursed.
Well, but it was coming from, well, we already reimbursed the general fund.
Okay, well, somebody needs to be reimbursed $149,000 then.
Well, it's...
Fire Fund, EMS, cemetery?
No, 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 none of the money ever came out of any of those other funds.
Okay.
Only came out of the general fund. So, well, my understanding is that some of this money is gonna be going towards paying off the loan. Paying off the, it's for the construction costs as they come along. It doesn't make sense to you?
No, because the way it was explained to me is USDA would not authorize one penny from the federal treasury to be transferred into our bank account unless they had an unpaid invoice in their little paws.
No, a paid invoice.
No, unpaid invoice.
We, you're right, we, they won't give us any money unless we have already paid for it.
Or not paid for.
No, we, we will not get any money unless they, we pay for it and show them, this, I mean, I've done this a couple of times now, and we have to, I have to send them the invoice and the canceled check that we dispersed to pay for that bill.
Okay.
Then they'll give us money back.
Okay, I will argue with that, but when the time comes that they actually start building this thing, and we have our monthly meeting, and the contractors all come to us with their, with their invoices, and Ashley sits there and goes, yes, no, thumbs up, thumbs down, you get paid, you don't get paid. We're not paying any of those people until the following, until the following meeting, because he's gonna go home and he's gonna take the ones that he approves, and he's gonna send them to Columbus, and Columbus is gonna send them to Washington, and Washington's gonna send us money.
The invoices?
Yeah. The invoices from the contractors. Those contractors haven't been paid a dime when we're sitting at this meeting. They have to justify the work that they did.
Yeah, okay.
But what we're doing now, maybe that's exactly what you're saying. But I still don't understand where that $149,000 is sitting there that's been reimbursed, and we don't know where it got reimbursed to.
What do you mean to?
The general fund, the fire fund, the EMS fund?
We, it wouldn't have been reimbursed, the money that, out of the $306,000 and change that was originally, that we originally got, right? Remember? The $306. $306,000.
Yeah, but that all represents monies that had been paid to someone.
Yes.
Okay.
And half of it generally was, the general fund had dispersed in 2017.
Got it.
So I, so I, so I put it back in the general fund, those dollars.
Okay, now the other half, where's it go?
Right where it is. We paid money out of that capital fund. Once we got money, we paid out of it. But I haven't, I have, there's only two places I've pulled money from for, for the expenses towards this project. The general fund and, and the capital fund. I'll show you.
Okay.
I, I, that was the plan all along. I mean, we even had a, you know, remember we set up a line item in the, in the general fund? To keep, so I could keep track of everything that we, you know, that we spent.
Right. And we got reimbursed for that.
Mm-hmm.
I understand.
Yeah.
But there's still $149,000 that's unaccounted for.
It's not unaccounted for.
Okay, I would, I would like to see what we paid.
Meet me here tomorrow.
On the, on the 149.
About a flat boat.
Okay, to, to another subject, suppose around fisk officers.
Yeah, why not?
At our last meeting, we authorized a $5,000 payment to the village of Yellowstone Springs for the Yellowstone Springs Clifton 343 connector. So if we could perhaps...
Yeah, anytime.
Put that in the...
Right after this meeting if you want.
The reimbursement pile.
Not that reimbursement pile.
Well, somewhere. We, we could do it now or later. I mean, they're not gonna spend it, but it's the thought that counts.
Yes, I apologize, you know, I remember putting in the...
We've already voted on that, so we don't have to...
No, I just need to do it, so I can do it with the next payroll.
Okay.
If that's, if that's okay.
That's fine.
All right. I'm gonna be back over myself. What else?
Nothing for me?
Nothing?
Nothing for, oh. All right, anything from... Nope. Zoning and/or zoning businesses, I think we're out of zoning business tonight. We went along the, all right, past meetings, let's see, MBRPC. We met last, going into the month, did a performance review for executive director and gave him a little bump in his salary, went over some transportation issues. Did some more regional, regional stuff, interesting regional planning. We hired a new executive director, regional planning, Cameron Block will be leading July 6th, I believe, is his last day. We've hired a man named Devin Shoemaker from Ross Township, Chillicothe area, to be taking over the job on the... Seems like a good fit, solid background in everything the Green County does, it's just, he does it on a small scale, and he's coming to a, to an operation that does it on a... to an operation that does it on a large scale. We do it on a large scale, but he has two employees where he is now, and he will have two employees doing five times the work, uh, so hopefully, and he's gonna drive back and forth to Chillicothe daily, which
Daily?
Won't, won't get too old, too soon.
That's a good hour and a half or so.
It's an hour. He sits fifty minutes, but so he must toot rattle up.
You can clip where you want on thirty-five, you have a stretch.
It's like he's ghosting you times.
Yeah, and I used to come into Columbus.
Seems like half the town does, and
Yeah, I think you're right.
Nothing, nothing going out the mill that I can think of, and that's my part. Apparently Mark's not gone to the ESC meeting, so we'll put that on hold and
There has not been a cemetery meeting?
We're holding up on that. So, cool, on we go. Moving right along, as they say. So we have, uh, uh, oh, I don't know where this comes, new business or old business.
Tell us and we'll decipher.
This is, we were, we, we were, uh, asked to review census data for the local volunteer census, something Luca, and, uh, they gave us the disc with all the addresses on it to check over, and so I did that, and it was about fifty of them. Some were good, some were bad, and so we did that, and it's supposed to be done by Friday, so hopefully I can remember to take it to the regional planning meeting tomorrow night and ask Ken to give it to Zoe, the IT girl, lady.
So what did you consult? I mean, they, they had fifty that they were wondering about, or?
Yes, they took Luca's data and compared it, don't ask me how to do this, compared it to all the addresses they have in their GIS file for all Miami Township, and filtered it out and sorted it out, and pulled out all the stuff that looked, obviously, well, this is wrong because such and such. And what was left with, for us, was like these fifty addresses, and they asked us to check them out, see what's going on. So I just started down the list and, and put them all in the, in the county GIS system as a parcel or an address, uh, and it either came up as, most of them came up as phone made parcels that were attached to something, so there's no house on it, and so there's no need for the census to get involved with it. A few of them were, a few of them were the, uh, the Glen Building and the O Dot Building and the Boy Scout stuff, and none of those count because there's no, I mean, living there, you know, in those. Uh, some, there was a half a dozen of them that were in, in Bath Township, but in a Dayton, Yellow Springs road address, so apparently the, you know, the little pointer just kept going over the line for, for little ones.
Dayton, Yellow Springs has crazy addresses.
Yeah. So anyway, that, that got done. So what, what category would that have been? Old, old news or new?
Sounds not old news.
Okay, so what's it have, old news?
You brought that before.
And new news is, you have any old business?
No.
New business? I don't, I asked you, but you need to search your memory bags and, and your, and your, and your, um, contacts in the vast Miami township.
I fucking know, but forget things.
For, for a new, for a new BZA member and a new play, zoning commission alternate. We need one of each.
Okay.
We are one short on BZA, and the, the zoning commission is fully staffed with five, but it's always nice to have an alternate available, and over the years, I have, I have milked every single acquaintance I have, the pigeonhole them for, for being on either of those boards. And so I'm kind of tapped out and, and willing, uh...
Yeah, and in case I didn't realize it, but the BZA doesn't meet on a monthly basis.
Or yearly basis. Just when there's a piece of deal.
Just when someone wants to, yeah, request a, um, you know, what do you call it? Yeah.
Variance.
Yeah, variance.
Uh, okay, so that takes care of that, and that takes care of that, and the last one I have, and this is, uh, this is probably, this might be new business, I mean.
I'd have a minor item when we get to it.
I've been asked by a relative, a relative, a resident to look into the possibility of having Spectrum provide high-speed internet service to Miami Township incorporated areas. And I said, okay. And, uh, he says he's called fifty or a hundred times to try and get it, you know, try and get him to do that, and they tell him, well, they need to he needs to have the township contact Spectrum in order to
For what, high speed?
Yeah, high-speed internet to, to run cables.
High speed?
No, not, very few people have high speed.
What do I have?
I don't know.
Well, what does anybody have? You have a computer and a
Some of the rural areas, like where Amy used to live on Clifton Road, she didn't have, there's no cable at all.
Yeah, and AT&T only has selected areas that they're in U-verse internet networks.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's, that's what we got. AT&T, it's a, but it's a wireless, you're not going anywhere in the house with my Mac up. It is not slow, but
I would be interested in investigating that further.
Sure.
So, which phone number is what?
Oh. Who's that? This is Bart, Bartley's phone number, and this is his email address. So it is.
This is who requested that we
That's correct.
Call.
Yes, a man who lives on Swimming Pool Road and does business out of his house. And has been trying to get high-speed internet, and has called Spectrum many times. And they've said, we just have to call the main office and get the process rolling where the township does something. He didn't know what township would do.
Well, then I'll call him and ask who has he been contacting in Spectrum and
Yeah, he doesn't have a contact.
Oh, okay.
He just asks, he just calls the main number.
Okay.
I was, I was open for a contact.
Yeah, I know a few things.
That's what we need, somebody in the know.
No, I'm not saying I'm in the know, I know a few things.
Then you know a few more than I do.
Is it you?
If we're talking about that.
New subject?
It is now a new subject.
Uh, this is hardly an item for a formal meeting, but our US flag out there is pretty tattered.
Oh, is it? Oh, my.
What does it take to get a new flag?
I'll go with Betsy Ross, active copies, and, uh, how many does anyone, I don't know.
I mean, just, you can see it as you walk by on the sidewalk.
We'll take care of that tomorrow.
I just hope that one doesn't sit around in this meeting room, the, the six years or eight years that the last one did.
Uh, you should go to the equipment room, we've got five old places, no one knows what to do with them.
Uh, there are formal ways of retiring a flag?
There was, there was Flag Retirements Day in Green County, remember we had that meeting? And Gene Fisher, which is, is long past, but
Well, yeah, there's a ways, a whole ceremony in, in front, we've got, it looks like there's been a mass murder around here because there's always flags nicely pulled.
Well
But we'll take care of this.
All right, that is a piece of new business.
Do an American flag, or something?
Yes. Anything else before the board? Hearing that, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
I so moved.
By acclamation, it is.
Look at that.
It's like